All right, we'll call the meeting to order.
Follow procedures, and I'd like to report to the town chairman regarding the psychological testing. So was there a vote on that? Because I can see a ye or nay on that. Instead of the town council, I mean, I, I don't know.
It was something that Keith suggested about cost savings. So, any, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm opposed to spending money, but I'm just saying, you know, the rest of the council is, but I'm.
We had previously decided to do it. He brought up that he didn't think we needed to do it and could save money. So there was not a vote proposed. It was a discussion about an existing practice that we already have. So it would have to be changed from what we're already doing.
And a motion made to change it, and there was no motion made to change it. So it was just discussion. Any other questions for discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll say.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Oh, sorry.
I wasn't here. So I can't vote on this one, this way, I said.
Okay. All right, bank reconciliation and claims.
I know that we approved the bank reconciliation after in the June, June claim package as presented. I'll say. I'll say.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. All right, so then we can move then to the public hearing on the sewer rates for non-residential customers. Marion, do you want to review that?
Um, we will not be taking a vote tonight. There was some mix-up at the paper and the appendix was not advertised. It will be advertised for the July meeting. I've presented to the council that we go with the Indiana un-metered rates and charges for the commercial properties or anything non-residential for our sewer to help offset any increase that may come in the future for the residents.
So I've opened that up to discussion with the council.
I was wondering if the state has that statute or had standard rates for like, for like warehouse, they have it, they have it posted?
Lou would be the question, person to ask them.
And basically what you see, when you see it out for.
Oh, yeah.
There is an Indiana code list pretty much like this. That is what's called equivalent dwelling unit ratio against what is a normal residential EDU. They do this so that under the rates that you have, your flat rate, fifty-six, seventy-three, and that's the one EDU of service. But those non-residentials that may put more in a sewer rather than just keep, you know, being charged that one EDU to make it fair and equitable with everybody, you use this charge then as your guide for your billing. So that, for instance, an office that has a number of people or a large footprint or something would get charged based on the EDU in this charge and would pay something more than a simple residential building.
So this is just based on, on the flow, not to say, for example, like if you had a warehouse and you had only two bathrooms in there, you should only, I would only think you would only be paying double what the, the standard rate is, even though you're a warehouse and you don't have two bathrooms.
But if you have six hundred employees.
Okay, so that's what I was saying.
And it's based on employees.
That is going by that.
Warehouses is based on employees.
Because that's how the government's standing on here, we're just paying fifty-six, seventy-three.
Yes, I did not exclude us from this list.
No, no. I noticed that, I'm just saying, yeah, it's just.
I do have a couple of things, especially while we have Lou here to answer for us. So on the page where she has like some suggested or based on the EDUs, like the Monrovia family restaurant was really significant. It was like five hundred and some dollars a month for a sewer.
Almost six hundred.
Yeah, almost six hundred dollars. And it looks like seats matter a lot.
It does.
So then, just on the churches, you don't have anything because look at all the seats they have. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that.
And the reason I don't, and I don't have anything, because I need to visit these places and I need to say, how many people do you have in your congregation every Sunday?
Well, and so like the diner up there, you know, they have, they don't even have men's and women's bathrooms. They have one little bathroom and they have this little tiny kitchen. How did, you know, like, can you educate us on how the seats matter so much, I guess? Is it?
Let me look.
And I don't understand how Main Street isn't more seats than the diner.
And we would be even bigger since all these seats would naturally nest us.
No, because.
Those people that attend meetings.
We're an office building, we're not a restaurant, and it's based on employees in that offices. And we also don't have a surgery room or, you know, it, it's based on all of those things. If you look at the appendix that will be attached if we pass this ordinance in July, it pretty much explains it. I mean, if it's food service, cocktail, lounge, or tavern, it's, um, looks like it's six dollars and.
Forty-one.
Forty-one cents per, see, and that's, that's where I, I don't know where, what to charge somebody people because per customer or per pet that they operate on, that's not a given. That's not, you know, they may have twenty surgeries one month and zero the next. Or forty, fifty animals one month and then twenty. So I'm not sure how, that's something that I'm going to have to work closely with Lou on to figure out how to accurately get these rates figured out.
Lou, I want to point out one thing, on your laundromat, for a laundromat, it says five, sixty, seventy-three for washing, okay? But if you had a condominium, a multi-family, one bedroom, and if it has a washer or dryer, shouldn't it be also be charged the same?
I mean, it seems, no, because technically you're not going to do laundry all day long.
Okay, so somehow frequency is part of.
That's really a lot of this.
So just for like background, if, if we had our own water company, these bills would be based on the flow of water that that facility uses, correct?
Correct, generally in most municipalities that own their own water system and wastewater, everybody's metered, and then your sewer reordments would reflect. Sewer bill is based on water consumption, but we don't have that. So when we were set up, just because it was utility, it was debt and operations divided by a number of customers. And that's how you landed on fifty-six, seventy-three, it's been that way since day one. And so now that, as you're seeing growth, we know that the school is going and that, that may have prompted this feeling and then trying to get to where the individual residents aren't bearing the same cost as a ratio here to a house.
So the school was negotiated when the, this is from my knowledge of the school board not being part of this. They negotiated the EDUs and they negotiated them down because they say, well, it's just a brand-new building, we're not going to have it full yet, and that was fifteen years ago. And so our pupils have gone up tremendously since then. So that is what prompted me, but you've always had a, a thing that businesses were not paying any more than one person living in a home. So is there any instance where people could perhaps like, you know, was, we're going to give warning that this change is coming? And if they can maybe present their water bills for the last year, that they could appeal these EDUs?
Certainly you have that ability to do that.
But not on new businesses.
I mean.
Not on a new business, we've never had a laundry facility here, but we will have one here soon.
Yeah, if there's a history where they can come in and prove to you based on water usage that they don't come near those things, certainly Lou as a board that is governed by what's called owner label of the state of Indiana can certainly do that.
So I just need to start calling businesses and see if they will share that.
Did we have any votes, did you want to warn County Rural Water?
The last I heard from Morgan County Rural Water, they were working on it, but they said that they would likely have to have an agreement between us and them to share that data.
If you need some help, let me know.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
One thing that I, that did garner some conversation on this was industrial. Because I think it was aligned for industrial in here. It was our recommendation to the town to just keep it to be industrial. Because there's so much differentiation in what I think industrial can be. As you know, Latin, if you're wet industry, industrial greatly needs your sewer system that should be determined on an individual basis, and you're just going to be industrial.
And most likely would have a flow meter if it doesn't exist now, we're going to ask for one if it's.
If it's something of any complexity and potentially see if they have something that.
Probably a D, yes. A buyer's usual plan, just a few of the.
So Marion, did you say we are or we are not going to open a public hearing for that?
Um, we can open the public hearing and if anyone wants a copy of this ordinance and the appendix that I would like to present next one. I feel like it needs to be maybe tabled or read, which I know.
I, I, I am going to make the recommendation that it be tabled and that we properly advertise the public hearings, even though it was a safe, that everybody's given the opportunity to get the information before we have our first public hearing.
Do I have any support to that?
We need to make a motion to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the, the vote on this and bring it up at next month's meeting.
I'll say.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, old business, we're going to discuss the sidewalk over here at forty-two and Marley Way. The homeowner is unable to join us and I think Lou's going to give us some information on what he's come out, it's going to require to make the changes.
Sure, I sent an email out this afternoon and I, sorry, it was somewhat tardy, you know, in terms of the timing, but we were relying on getting an updated price from E and B paving on this matter. Just kind of going backward on how the CCMG program works in the state of Indiana. It's, it's grant money that comes from the Indiana Department of, of Transportation. And you apply for it based on road conditions and so on and so forth. But for the 2024 round that we put in for, for this particular project, the town pays twenty-five percent of the construction cost plus all engineering fees. Okay, so if we have a million dollars worth of construction paving, NDOT will pay seven hundred and fifty thousand, the town would be liable for two fifty. So based on what was discussed prior to in terms of available dollars to put in, a scope of work was put together in terms of what streets to do and what work to do. And that application was uploaded to the CCMG program on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And so at that point, the scope of work was set. So we put plans and specs together and so forth, and the project was bid. And E and B paving was the low bidder, you had seven bidders, I believe, as I recall, on the project, and E and B was the low bidder. So they were awarded the project. And when that happens, then they're the contractor of record. All the work on this project that flows through and qualifies for the NDOT CCMG money has to go through them, okay? The bid for the sidewalk out here, and it's somewhat confusing because this street goes by various names, NDOT has their list of names and you have to use that street name in your application, but we all know it is Church Street or Marley Way now. And so the bid for the sidewalk-only portion was eight thousand five oh five. So what that meant, your town share to pay for that sidewalk was two thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, and NDOT would pay six thousand three hundred seventy-eight, seventy-five, okay? Work done on CCMG projects has to be within the recognized right-of-way. The concrete approaches and the sidewalk, you see the form out there and you see the approaches, are within what we believe to be the legal right-of-way. And right-of-ways exist for your streets, your sidewalks, utilities for the common good of the public. That's what they're there for. Why that is so wide, I don't know, you'd have to go back to planning history. I, I have to assume perhaps because of the school campus, that may have been a reason why, but regardless, that's what it is. And so we won on the premise that work was being done in the right-of-way. Now, that evening when, you know, things were cut out and the walk was in there, I think the, the horror was based on the premise that we're on private property. Both the homeowner probably felt that way and a lot of you probably felt that way. It was like, we have no business doing this, why wasn't this notified? Or all of those procedural things. But from our perspective, since we feel and we still do recognize that it's within the legal right-of-way, of course, we didn't take those steps or purchase an easement or anything because we didn't think there was one necessary. Unfortunate set of circumstances, believe me, if we had to do it over again, we would. But we are where we are at this point, okay? So moving forward, you've got some options, and one was, one was just to delete the sidewalk altogether. If you do that, you're going to have to pay out of pocket the three thousand six eighty-three and forty-nine cents that the contractors already got into digging it out and forming it up to this point and probably actually a little more than that because they're going to have to take those forms out, regrade and restore that property. You will get nothing from NDOT in terms of payment because if they would walk through and say, oh, there was no sidewalk here, it doesn't qualify as the pay item, so you wouldn't get your share of that, okay? The other one was move the sidewalk up to the pavement. This would require a curb because generally when you have a sidewalk matching up against pavement, there's a curb that breaks tho, that joint and also gives you something to pave up to. And in this case, we would have to add a curb, obviously excavate, form the new sidewalk, restore that old part that was dug up. We'd have to add a storm inlet down just before the curb so that we make sure that what flows down the street gets picked up and then ties into the inlet that's near there. There's a beehive inlet on that corner and that also ties into the inlet on forty-two. In addition to that, if we then intersect directly into that sidewalk, that's where the existing ADA ramp is. So we would have to, you know, plan and design and put in an ADA ramp there at that intersection as well to meet up with the one that's there. So as I stated earlier, E and B paving is your contractor of record, so it has to go through them. They provided a quote, it was originally in the twenty thousand dollar range, but that was based on a rolled curb and gutter, we told them just a straight curb. And so their estimate came down to the nineteen thousand four fifty-six, sixty-six. If you'd like to go this route, these additions basically are out of your pocket. And that will pay the original seventy-five percent of the eighty-five oh five for the sixty-three, seventy-eight, seventy-five. So the remaining amount will have to be paid by the town of Monrovia, which would be thirteen thousand oh seventy-seven, ninety-one. The other, only other option there then is to keep it in place as it's formed and poured and, and we go about our business and you do collect the seventy-five percent match from the NDOT.
Lou, real quick, just to catch everybody up, Lou and the owner of BS, Sanjay and I, met and went out and looked at everything. And at that time, Sanjay did say he felt the best long-term solution would be to put the curb in. He said, you know, that the water's going to run down along the curb. It's going to be a much better finished product as far as the curb will go all the way to the road. So we won't have road gravel sidewalk. And.
That was under the premise that we moved the sidewalk.
Right, right. So he did feel like that would be the best end result. He was going to ask Chandler or E and B to kind of work on this quote a little bit. So it doesn't look like they were willing to do that.
No, although I think the number Chandler gave was the number E and B brought forward. They didn't mark it up at all, so it was based on the Chandler cost.
So I guess what my question is, is based upon the fact that there was a water valve that you guys didn't have identified, right?
Correct, because the maps that were furnished to us by Morgan County Rural Water didn't show that water line there.
And so that was a, is something that was unforeseen. And then the drainage wasn't going to be correct the way it was drawn, so we're going to have to do a standpipe and move all that. Don't those things, I guess, create the opportunity for a change order on the project?
Um, generally speaking, as the NDOT program works under the CCMG, you put in what's been put in the application. I don't think there's the opportunity for a change order necessarily, so. Now, going back to the point when this was brought to my attention that evening and of course our phones started blowing up the next morning at four-thirty in the morning, I then got involved and took a look at it and, and thought to myself, angling the sidewalk over and going west of the existing beehive that's in that grassy area there might in effect cut off some of that gentleman's downspout drainage. And so at that point, I suggested that we put another circular inlet in at the west part of that sidewalk to connect and to ensure that he drains.
And is that circular inlet in these quotes?
No, that's something that we're working out with the contractor.
So they're willing to work it out on that, but they weren't really willing to do anything on, right?
Correct.
What, what if, just a suggestion here, once we finish the sidewalk, this age, and for our next CCR grant that we go for, that we look at paving Church Street here, and then that would go ahead and enable them at that time to go ahead and fix the sidewalk to the point where it does come out.
I don't think you can go back in again on the same street.
What's that?
I don't think you can go back in again on the same street.
What, yeah, but this isn't paved, so what if we wanted to pave it?
No, it's, church has been paved.
And just like last week?
Yeah.
No, I was just trying to think of another way to go ahead and go around this.
I know.
So the quote from All Around Concrete at sixty-five hundred, where does that play into this, just so I understand?
So he was up here doing the repair on our sidewalk, so I asked him to give us, so getting the estimate from E and B to move the sidewalk. And so that is All Around's.
They're willing to do for sixty-five hundred what we have a quote from the other company?
They're willing to do what they think needs to be done. We would need to get drawings from Lou to All Around if we wanted to get that inlet and all that stuff in place. That's still, that, it might be, it's.
So our other option is to delete the sidewalk. Don't go any further with what we've done, there might be some additional costs.
So it's going to have to be.
Or we could let, get All Around to give us a quote on removing it as well. They might be deeper at removing that work out there than the folks that did it. And then have them fix the problem, no community crossings money, all of our money, but less than the twenty thousand. That's another option that hasn't been.
Yeah.
Correct.
For us to handle ourselves.
Or we could go ahead and, and go ahead and do what we want to do and go ahead and finish this thing out to the point where we want to go ahead and put in the new curb and the new ADA ramp as well too. And I understand though that Ricky was saying there were certain, certain funds that we'd have to spend before the end of the year anyway, so we could go ahead and pull that from there.
That's on the alley, that's the next, that's the alleyway quotes that are in town.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if this road, I mean, it's, it's something that we could go ahead and consider, I mean, if we could.
Yeah, that, that option's on here, that's the other option, is that not correct?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Carol, to, to, to your point about the other concrete company, what we would want to make sure is that what we wanted, or it's an apples to apples, because I think their verbiage was a turn-down curb. And that's not necessarily the same as a stand-up curb necessarily, or we feel more comfortable checking into that part of it.
I would say that price is going to go up once, with like a curb and stuff, that price is going to go up more.
I would agree.
What'd you say, Ray?
All Around's price would go up higher if they put a normal curb in instead of just roll the heck of the sidewalk.
Well, you want to tell us why you would prefer the regular curb versus the roll-down curb again? Because honestly, when you told me, I didn't think it was as big a deal as for that section to be.
Okay, we got different terminology working here. A turn-down curb is basically that sidewalk person, as part of their forming, you'd have a regular for a four-inch sidewalk on the west side. On the east side, you would dig it down to some degree, maybe put a little larger form on there and then finish that so it's got a little bit of depth to that sidewalk on the street side. A normal curb, you're going down twenty inches, which is the NDOT standard, and pouring that curb all the way and then killing it to drift down where it meets the ADA ramp and then here at the.
Okay.
At the inch, at the approach.
It's a little bit of a sidewalk that's going to last a whole lot longer.
Yeah, yeah.
The other two types of curb, one, one that allows people to drive up on, up on the sidewalk.
Correct, that's what we call a roll curb and gutter. And that was a little bit more on the E and B quote, and I don't think that's necessary in this particular case.
Well, the way that it's set up right now, they just pour the road sidewalk, anybody could drive on it.
I feel, just if we're going to open for discussion, I would, I would guess I would rather delete it at this point and then revisit it at a later time. If, if nobody thinks that the six thousand dollar quote from All Around makes sense. We took a lot of that guy's yard. And to be honest, I'm not an attorney, but I really feel like, um, we definitely went into his yard. And you said you believe we were within our right-of-way.
I do.
Right, well, we need to know, one way or the other, before we pour concrete. before we pour concrete in his yard.
Only one real way to make sure, have a survey or come out.
Yeah, I mean, one of the first things I did is I went to the GIS map and I pulled up that property card for this property. And then he's paying taxes on .238 acres, as I recall. And based on the dimensioning per scale, it does fall with the box drawn or the rectangle drawn for his property.
Did you have a conversation with any of the neighbors?
No. No, and again, unfortunate set of circumstances again. But obviously, the thinking that we were in the public right of way, there isn't necessarily the need legally to do that.
But you and Sanjay both said that it wasn't the correct way to do it either.
Well, I'm not going to say, I'm not going I'm not going to say that.
Well, that, I mean, I do feel like there could possibly be a little bit of help from VS too. I mean, we, there's a lot of boo-boos here that this guy has been super patient with us over. And if this is the best we can do, then I have promised him one thing is that we will make some type of decision tonight. Because he's been mowing around that mess for almost three weeks.
We're trying to make sure that we are in the right place. I, I would recommend that we go ahead and get that survey again. I do, I just think that that way we know exactly what is what. And then from there, I don't think we can make a decision unless we are absolutely
Let's say we delete it and look at it again because it's already been a month. We're not waiting another month with the guy's yard to
We still need your survey anyways.
Well, if we, if we decide we're going to do it later, because a survey is an expense also.
Yeah. But at least we'll know where we are too.
Well, and here's the other thing. If there's no sidewalk there, it's not the end of the world.
There wasn't one for
That's right. And so I, I would be in, on board with, with that if we, if we move it to a vote. And the other thing, I just, I think we all know this. I'm just going to say it. Lesson learned. When we're going to do one of these projects and it's on, going to affect whether it's in there right of way and there's a debate or not, the homeowner deserves a letter from us saying on such and such date, there is planned construction, sidewalk, whatever it is, be done. I, I think to Tammy's point, the homeowner, whether it's right of way or not, prescriptive easement or something like that, he's had use of that as his yard for many, many years. And for us to come back now based on, hey, we think it's our right of way and it may be, it may not be. We don't know that yet. You know, those of you that are, you know, attending tonight, you don't know what we're talking about. It's a quick 50-foot walk out our door to see it. It clearly is in what he perceived to be his yard quite a bit. And I, I think we need to delete it as well. And even though it may cost us a little bit, I think it's a valuable lesson we've learned this evening and before now, but we're talking about this evening, so.
And before we do take a vote, what did you and Sanjay decide about how the alley came out off filter from the concrete that was poured? The apron?
We could go back to the contractor and ask them to pour an additional footage on the south side of that apron. You know, I, I can't surmise, I wasn't involved in the design. That was Jonathan Mullen and I'm not going to throw him under the bus. But when field measurements are taken, I don't know what that gravel on that side of the sidewalk was, if it's danced out since then and now when you're looking at a straight line, if it looks odd or not, I don't know.
Well, but it shouldn't be eyeballed, right? We should be
No, what I'm saying is it could be a different, a different condition today than it was back when the project was being laid out.
The alley could be in a different condition?
Yes, because if you go out there, you'll notice there looks like a different type of gravel to the south side of that than what is, is in the alley per se. So I'm saying when you have grass merging with gravel, sometimes that changes based upon activity and so on and so forth. So I, I don't know.
Wouldn't that be part of the project plan then?
It was at the time, but this was measured and planned back before July of 2024.
All right, well, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go with the option to delete the sidewalk with the cost of work to date being incurred out of pocket and the cost to return it, to remove the forms being taken under our responsibility. And then we get the, and also added to that motion will be the request that we get a survey done to define where the property line of the right of way is for the work that we have just been discussing.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I'm all in favor of the survey, but I'm not paying Do we have the property owner had a survey done like in the last 10, 15 years? Like when they, they, I don't know how long they lived there, but there's a mortgage?
I'm sure that there's something, somewhere along the way in the county records, but he did not have anything. Because he specifically said, what are my choices? I can spend $2,000 or $3,000 and cause a state and, you know, have to live right here or I can just put up and shut up. And I said, we don't want you to feel that way.
He might have an adverse possession claim as well. He's been tending to that property and purchased it thinking it's and the beginning of his mortgage document say that, that could be a very real issue.
And I, I don't think any of us feel like the right of way is 60 feet or should be 60 feet if it is, so. I know that when I advertise anything with GIS and real estate, I have to put that it is an approximation and it is not to be used for anything official.
Yeah, because I believe these books came in last month and were on fire in the middle of meetings.
All right, so quotes for grading and gravelly alleys within the town limits. Do you want to pick that back up? It was tabled last month. It was tabled. We have one alleyway missing. It has been added. The quotes are updated. And Ricky has some information on a contract that he can use to pay for this.
The only comment I would make is that so and I did speak with our financial advisors on the meeting with Tammy, Marion and myself. This was two weeks prior. So in our 2248 SCA 67 Lloyd's Special Distribution Fund, which is a fund that we could spend on for roads. In my fund report, we have $15,964.61 that we can use.
And we have to use by the end of the year. Is that in here somewhere? I'm not seeing it. How much was it, Ricky?
Probably not in there. I have the, it's in my hand, the fund report. And I have it highlighted.
Okay, so that was in one of the two funds?
Yeah, the ARPA fund, I'm going to leave our, excuse me, our additional comment line because that's a different topic of discussion.
So how much is in the second fund that we have to use?
but we have appropriated $11,000 in the fund. But we have to, again, spend it before the end of the year with appropriate that money to into that appropriation line either because we have to spend the remainder before the end of the year.
So what is the total?
It'd be around $17,419.37.
Wouldn't it be 21 something?
Yeah, I thought it would be 21 something else.
Well, it's not going all in this, it's not going all in 2248 when I do the additional appropriation if it gets approved. Because the ARPA grant fund, which is the second fund that we have to use for the end of the year, has 11,000 in it, so. Let's see, 1,000 plus 6437. So the second fund, that ARPA grant fund that I was mentioning would have $17,419.37. The one that we're spending for this that I just mentioned would only have $15,964.61 because it has no money in there right now. So I'd have to move all the
Have you got a 20 you can give me three 10s for?
I'm like, I'm not tracking.
So the $15,964 you're speaking of, you're going to take it out of the $17,419? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay, let's start over.
Can you explain that?
Yeah.
And the fund that I would like to use for our alleyways, we have $15,964.61. Our lowest bid, that would more than cover it. We would have some extras and, and that fund has to be spent on roads and streets.
Okay.
Okay, the ARP grant fund has $6,419.37 and you're saying another 11,000 needs to be appropriated to that?
No, there's already 11,000 appropriated into
Okay, so 11,000 plus the 6,400.
Yeah, so it'd be
So that's where you got the $17,419.
Do you know what that fund can be used for?
Used for
I think anything.
So where did the $6,000 getting pulled out come from?
Well, when I talked to Financial Solutions, they said we have to spend all of it or we have to pull all of it out of the fund and spend it by the end of the year, so.
So it's, it's in another bucket that has to be spent.
Yeah.
Basically. But that $17,000 can be spent on anything, not just roads.
Yeah, they said anything, I believe.
So we're kind of talking about two different things. Okay, that's, I think, helpful to understand. So basically, we have two different funds. Both funds need to be spent before the end of the year. And both funded, both funds individually sound like they have enough money to do the alleys and roadways. So I guess that's maybe the way my ears wanted to hear this. And then, so we just need to make a decision this evening on which fund we want to do, if we want to do the alleys and roadways, which fund the money's going to come out of and, and vote on it.
It would make sense that it would come out of the one with 15 because that one has to be spent on roads and streets.
Okay, yeah, that didn't have anything, yes. That, that's, yeah, that makes sense as well. Okay.
Are we sure, here's a quick question. Are we sure that all of these are legitimate, valid alleys?
Yes, more and more actually drove them and gave me the list.
Okay, but I mean, like they're mapped out, alleys. So I know Phil and I discussed this a couple of years ago about some that have
I know we're, yeah, I have a list of those also.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, there, there's some alleys that have become people's yard.
Yep, yep.
These are So that's going to leave us with $2,114 that still need to be spent on roads and streets. And I wonder if we can use it on sidewalks?
Sounds like maybe we can.
Well, and then this, this leads me to my question. Then do we want to table this until we find out for sure? How we want to divide that up?
I move that we table. So you decide what, how, how we want to do it. Especially with, with, you know, undoing the sidewalk out here and making sure we got our
But the alleyways
We know which alleyways need to be done.
Yeah, we know which alleyways
That's not really up for debate.
And I've been here for five years. We've never done anything with the alleyways. They are mad. They really need some attention. Thank you, get mad at me, but it's 30 more days.
Why can't we do the alleys and then we still have funds to decide what to do with the sidewalk?
Okay, well, what I was thinking was if we are going to visit this outside of the CCNG, that we would want to make sure first if we can use that road and street money for that. I guess it doesn't matter, it's six and a half dozen. I mean, total, there's about 32. Even if we did the alleys, we would still have enough to do the sidewalk also. And if Okay, that's fine, I get it.
We've tabled this twice already.
You what?
We've tabled the alleys things twice already.
Okay. I'm one of five, all right, I'm one of five.
No, I'm just saying we tabled it twice already.
I'll entertain a motion.
So we've got two bids, right? So we need to decide which, which one? Is that right? Do I understand that right?
Yes, only two bids.
One's for $13,850. One is for $19,199.28. So enough of a difference that we need to Second bid makes it very, has a line item that they will clean the job site when finished. The other one doesn't mention that. Maybe not a big deal, but interesting.
I'm not impressed enough by $6,000 for that cleaning though.
You guys could always vote on using the money and then Marion could call and just say, hey, what is, can you meet other things in this?
Like will you clean it?
Yep. And then you could say, you know, she has to use the lowest quote as long as it includes, as long as it includes
Or you can table it till next month when we have all of our questions on too.
Well, I'll make the motion that we take the low bid Mason Trucking Excavating for $13,850 to do the work as per the quote for the alleyways.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, consider the Mayfield Insurance Renewal. They are here, Emily is here. If they would like to come up to the podium and speak on it.
Hi. Hi, this is Emily. I'm Karen. But we came tonight because I think your deadline is fast approaching and we just kind of did, see if you have questions or if you need to go over with us and see if you want us to find that renewal. Questions, comments?
I, I don't know, but on the stuff that we got sent by Ricky, there's some, some writing on some of the answers regarding, I guess, what was compensation. And then I'm not sure if this printed item is different from that or not. Has to do with
Does it say town of Monrovia Renewal Proposal on the top?
Um, I'm looking for that right now. Proposal of insurance, I've got, it looks like this.
Yes.
Okay. And there was some writing on the, the bottom pages because it looks like amounts were crossed out. I wasn't sure what we were looking at there. Like on the very last page, for example.
Give a copy of that that we can have. We have the same thing.
It looks like there's some of it, looks like it's been crossed out. And I'm not sure what I'm looking at then.
I have some of my notes from when we came back with Marion last month giving some different options.
Okay.
We proposed a few options that would make the premium slightly higher.
Okay.
So what were the, like, what did you guys come up with, Mary?
So the total, the total renewal is $36,069.50. That's for all lines, which is the package, which includes auto, general liability, employee benefits, public officials, long term acts.
36 what? Okay.
And then it also includes work comp and the cyber liability, so that's the total, it's quite a bit higher than last year, the reason being is the last two years, we had a significant claim each year, right after the renewal. So we had the roof twenty-twenty-three, and then last year was the sewer backup, so unfortunately, two claims, two years, it was quite a bit higher.
It's a good thing we're not in Florida.
Yeah.
Well, insurance is in what we refer to as a hard market, I mean, you guys have probably seen it where your homeowners insurance and things, that insurance companies are tightening their guidelines on what they'll accept, what they won't accept, and it's, in my thirty-six years doing this, it's probably the hardest market I've endured. But it limits us with the claims history, I mean, we normally have markets we can go to and look at and see if we can offer you something better, but with the two large claims, the, there weren't a lot saying, yeah, we want that risk, so we're limited on where, that would, companies that would even accept it, unfortunately.
So you're expecting that we're gonna make another claim about this one?
No, no, I hope, I hope it's.
We're gonna have a really hard time next year. One of the options that I offered was adding blanket police equipment, so that blanket means there's a lump sum, we're not specifying coverage for individual items, it just would be a fifty thousand dollar limit for police equipment. That would add two hundred and fifty-eight dollars to the annual premium.
That includes a, is there, that's a deductible of five thousand on that, too?
Uh, no, that wouldn't be a five thousand dollar deductible, that would be a one thousand dollar deductible, or in the mind.
So keep what we have and add this additional rider?
Yeah, it's, it's an option, yeah, it is an option.
But it would save you listing all those items, and then say you buy something and you forgot to let us know, and it's not on the list, and then something happens to it, if it's under that blanket of amount, then it's, you don't have to update that list, they will ask for a list, correct, each year?
Yeah, we do, we did review the list, we went over it, made sure everything was correct.
Just to make sure your blanket amount is accurate.
And what about any other recommendations you said?
The, the second option is on the cyber liability, there's two deductible options, there's a zero deductible and a, I wanna say it's twenty-five hundred, I can't even see here, yeah, zero deductible or twenty-five hundred, and it's about five hundred dollars difference in premium. Five hundred dollars lower if you take a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. And cyber claims are on the rise, I'm sure you've heard about banks and insurance companies and all sorts of people getting hacked, it's important coverage.
Have you ever, in your entire life, ever paid on earthquake coverage? Yeah. But we have it in here, we have it in here, is that something we're having to say for?
Let's try to simulate an earthquake.
Okay, yeah, exactly, just wondering what we, why would we wanna consider earthquake?
We are in a earthquake seismic zone, so.
But they've never, you've never paid on that ever?
Not in my career.
We, we have had, well, I'm not saying we have, or I'm just saying they've never paid on, so.
Well, I'm from Southern California, and I've seen many claims.
I live in Southern California, so, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I was just kinda curious about that.
But I'm from Wilbur, and we haven't had.
Here to know we had, had one out here.
Yep.
Oh, I was gonna say, I've been to many things, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other recommendations?
Those are the two options that we proposed.
Okay, what about the public officials, because that is one question that we had about, like, the bonds and stuff, what does the public official thing cover and not cover?
So under the package liability, this is wrongful acts liability for public officials, so if someone were to make some kind of major error, for all of you, the council, you would be bonded separately from this policy.
Frank?
Is it a crime, or is it a law?
Yeah.
A mistake is a mistake, that should be covered.
Wrong act is like an errors and omissions.
Oh, not a crime?
Well, there's separate coverage for crime.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right, and then we have bonds for Ricky, Mary Ann, Callie, and a couple others, since they're handling funds, so that's.
So what does the wrongful acts cover, then?
Wrongful acts coverage, in that sidewalk situation, so talk about that sidewalk, if you had put that sidewalk in, and then it's determined that it was on somebody else's property, you've erred, and they could sue you, and they, so that would be where your errors and omissions could come in, to cover you through that lawsuit.
So then what is the coverage for this rider that you have on there, like, what's, what's it pay up to, what's the deductible?
It, the public official wrongful acts liability is one million per occurrence, one million aggregate, so a max they would pay out in the course of a policy term would be a million.
Okay, and then what, what's the costing this pay annually for that?
It's all lumped into one package, so it's not broken down, and then it also includes the umbrella coverage, so.
It's not a rider, it's just, you're kind of explaining what we're covered with, gotcha.
It's a package policy, so it's, all the coverage is a package, yeah.
Can you define public official? Like, is it elected person?
Elected, yes.
Well, not every place covers elected officials, you're on your own.
Okay.
I mean, most, a lot of bigger cities are self-insured, so if an elected official does something, it's, it's a scenario.
Like Indian House?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for us?
We're upgrading the Suis Creek one plan right now, and there'll be a new backup generator going in, which costs quite a bit more than the original, but will that have to be adjusted on here?
Yes.
Yes, you wanna let us know that, that value once you enter into that.
Now, I don't know, we have something called blowers, and they're being, having to be put in, will they, you'll also have to know the value zone.
Yeah, you wanna let us know the value of that?
In the asset, yeah.
In the asset.
And the beautiful thing about this policy is it includes what's called a leap endorsement, so many changes that are made during the policy term, they're not charging additional premium for.
Okay.
So say you get a new police vehicle, which recently happened, they're not charging for that vehicle midterm, so once you pay your premium for the year, that's usually just it, and there are some endorsements they would charge additional for.
Like fee addability?
Yes, they would charge additional, but everything else, so when the park went in, there was no charge midterm, it didn't, you didn't see a premium change until the renewal, so that's really nice.
It's nice, but then most of it shows at that larger number at the, at the renewal, and you're thinking, well, I don't have a lot, but really, you weren't charged through the term, so you're only gonna get hit with it at renewal.
But you would've paid on it in the event that we'd had this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did we make a call for it?
I don't know that we did, that was a long, long month. No, no, but it did, it got struck by lightning, and it blew out.
Yeah, that was uncovered.
Well, Bob was running.
I have a wastewater plant in particular, was it part of an asset list that was furnished to them? I'm just saying, I'm offering to help if we need to update that asset list.
I do not know what was furnished to them for the sewer plant.
And I couldn't tell either.
Unless Danny had sent you guys something, I don't know, you guys have anything?
It's just not going in, so it wouldn't have been Danny, I don't think, right?
No, but I'm saying, it's what we had out there already.
Yes, what was, what we previously had, we, we had from Danny, and then we reviewed everything with Mary Ann, just, when was that, a few weeks ago, so.
So we need to get.
Because I think last time you guys got an asset list, was when, it was in twenty-one?
Yeah.
When Danny was here, I was president, and. Huh? And I don't think we've, I don't think we've updated it at all since then, no.
It's a million dollar, this one.
Shouldn't change.
Another nice thing is that all the property coverage, so for the buildings, is on a blanket as well, so unless everything was hit at the same time.
You've got a lot to draw on if there's more damage.
Yes, it's a bigger pot to hold, because it is the bucket blanket limit.
Counsel for discussion, does anybody have any comments regarding the additional blanket police policy for the two hundred and fifty-eight dollars per year?
It's just an option.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I, I would, I think it's a good idea, I think, right now, and the way things are, you get what you pay for, and everything's going up on the, but I think that, that way you're not having to itemize everything, I think you cover everything, with the blanket, I think that's what I do.
What about the cyber liability deduction change, is there support for changing the deductible to twenty-five hundred, to save five hundred, or keep it the way it is?
I think it's probably a good idea to change the deductible and save the five.
I'll agree with her on that, too.
I agree also, I mean, we could get hit, but we could probably absorb twenty-five hundred dollars, and in five years, we would've saved the money, so.
Okay.
So anybody want to put that in motion form?
I move that we proceed as, as we just discussed, with the change on the deductible on the sidewalk, and adding the police.
So you're motioning that we agree to the year's.
Yes.
Coverage with Mayfield, that we add the fifty thousand dollar blanket police rider?
Yes.
And that we reduce our deductible, or, excuse me, increase our deductible to twenty-five hundred to reduce our fees by five hundred for the cyber liability coverage? Do I have a second for that motion?
All second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate your business.
Hopefully, we won't have to contest again.
You guys weren't listening about the sidewalk thing, were you?
Were we listening?
Don't say nothing, don't say. Hopefully, we won't have any earthquakes today.
I'll be curious if you could, I'm on the county council, so I was curious if you could use that funding for sidewalks, if you're talking about. I will have that scan and stuff to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. The twenty-twenty-six budget preparation and submission calendar. This is a recommended timeline from a budget or a budget and work session with Mary Ann and Financial Services, Ricky and I, we all have been kinda tossing around some things that we're gonna run into with the changes at the state level. And so it's gonna require a good bit of discussion, I believe, I also would like to add, you have two new council members who have not done a budget process before, so I feel like, instead of just a quick evening meeting, that we perhaps should have a actual special meeting workshop. So Mary Ann has asked me to suggest it to Carol, that was her idea, that we perhaps have booked some time out during a workday, so that we can have Financial Solutions and department heads and so forth in for that, and we are recommending July sixteenth at one o'clock, I believe it's a Thursday.
I can be there.
July sixteen?
Yes, sir.
My calendar shows that does it Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, I don't know that I can, because we're having a ribbon cutting at our catastrophe of a new workplace, and I don't know that I'll, that would, if a week, I don't know that I could get away.
So it's not just that Wednesday, it's like, moving it to Thursday's not gonna make it better or anything?
Not that week, I don't believe, if anything, like, the Monday or something might be doable, but not, not the, not those two days, very likely, it's gonna be all.
Do you want me to look at moving it back one week to the Wednesday, the prior Wednesday?
Is there a reason Wednesday is better for you, Mary Ann?
It's just, that's how it ended up, no, any day is fine for me.
I mean, what about July the fourteenth, does that do?
I'm good on fourteenth.
That's a Monday, I'm good.
Is there anybody on vacation that week or anything? Fourteenth at one P M?
Yeah, I might be able to do that, I'd be more likely to be able to do that than I can on the sixteenth.
Mr. March?
I'm good for that week, the week before, I am, that's kind of fair.
So the fourteenth at one, we'll shoot you that?
Yeah.
All right.
And then the other dates that she has down there would be evening meetings, so August thirteenth would be an evening workshop, it's just to review all the things that we do in the special meeting, review it, make sure it's all what we all thought, and it all, you know, flies with SBOA and FSG, so. Any other date that needs to be verified, Mary Ann, I don't think that there's any, the rest are all just regular dates, pre-scheduled dates, right?
They are, and the dates are spread out far enough, for the most part, that we could always decide on the next day, and I will have forty-eight hours notice till I'm paid for now.
Okay.
Um, I did research, because last year, the question come up, that these workshops, could they be executive sessions, and I really don't feel like they can be. I feel like they need to be public, public, to the public, or open to the public, not necessarily adherent, but open.
What, what was done in the past?
Um, the workshops, I believe, were closed, but there at the end, the last workshop, I know it was questioned by the paper, and then we were told, no, the workshop cannot be an executive session.
I don't, I don't see any sensitive employee information or anything without us from taking it public, so I will let the paper know when I have a scan for that.
Sounds good.
That's only a day during the day, though, right? The fourteenth still during the day?
Yes.
And from what we learned from Financial Solutions, there is a lot that is going to be changed. All right, okay, discuss creating in ordinance for food trucks. That's your baby.
And the reason I'm presenting this is, I mean, we are, we do a lot of residents that are wanting to set up food trucks, whether it be for the whole summer, or Friday nights, um. There could be dog calls associated, unless they didn't come in and fill out a permit and get permission, so we can kind of look and see where they wanna place it, that way we have more control on if it's too close to the intersection, like the one down at thirty-nine forty-two. This would just be a discussion for right now, I would have to run, since there are fines, if they don't get them, I would have to run a public notice for it to be the public area. I just wanted to present you guys with the ordinance, the application that was created, and see if we want to proceed. I know that.
I thought the last meeting we, we had, that we said we weren't gonna do this right now, last month?
Um, I think we decided that they weren't having.
No, 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 we discussed.
Well, a lot has happened since last month, a lot.
Okay, I just don't know, I know, like, I know Carol made a statement, like, did someone look up the state statute, because the state now governs food trucks, a lot of, that's what they do.
Well, and a lot of this is, yeah, they, basically, they just need to show us that they have permission from the state, they need to show us that they have the, on board, we had an incident with a food truck here that was a cleaning site without water, there was no cleaning happening.
In a bucket.
In a bucket.
But that's a violation of the Board of Health.
Yeah, exactly.
That's who governs.
But we want to make sure that the Board of Health, they are cleared with Board of Health before they set up here.
So where did you get these things from, like, your hours of operation, and that they have to be two hundred feet from any brick and mortar restaurant, was given, written from?
That was just standard stuff for food trucks, I believe I pulled this off of another town. Yeah, I just pulled this off of another town.
Refrain from using loud music generators or signage that causes a nuisance, what, so they can't use any generator at all, and who determines what signage is a nuisance? I mean, is the sign that they have their renewal on a sandwich board at the, you know, at the end of their trailer, if I say that's a nuisance, I mean, how, how is that?
Where the wording can change, but as far as a generator, a food truck. But as far as a generator, a food truck that was sitting at 42 and 39 for weeks, or any generator, I have residents in here almost daily for a while telling me that this generator was literally driving them crazy. They could not sit outside because this generator was so loud.
Whose property were they on?
They were at the corner of 42 and 39, which I believe is owned by Nancy Lee.
So the private property owner, you permission to be there?
Yes.
So they were there legally?
Yes.
Because I, I know food truck owners, they have to use a generator because of the amount of power that comes out to, to have deep fryers and all that stuff. It takes a lot. And I know they could be loud, but there's noise ordinance that these can't go beyond like 11 o'clock at night.
But this was from, according to him, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 P.M., probably every day, all day.
Then I would talk to private property owner, that's letting them be there, right? That's, I mean, that's what I, if I let someone be on my property and not do anything illegal. But.
They ended up hooking power up.
Okay.
Well, there's also the thought that, does this apply to food trucks during the festival too?
And, and that's where I wanted to present it. Because I, I don't.
Yeah. No, that's what I was, that was my first observation, that how is this going to go with the food trucks during the festival?
But you're going to have to treat everybody the same.
Well, yeah, that's, I agree. I'm just saying, I just, and she's just presenting this so we can go ahead and look this over. This is something that, hold on just a minute. I understand, we have to have some sort.
So Mary Ann, these are the things that you'd like to see included. This ordinance? As our town executive, this is what you're recommending?
I could look over at closer and omit some things, but.
Because of all, I have to apply the food trucks to the festival as well too, so you may have some issues.
And that's where the problem lies. I mean.
Yeah.
We need to get control of the ones that think they can set up residence, but at the same time, you don't want to harm the ones that are here just during the festival or just on occasion. Which is why I suggested not associate it or be, they just simply have to go out on location. We know where they're going to put it, how many hours they're going to be there, how many days they're going to be there.
But it usually only pertains to public areas, not private property.
The one thing that I saw when I came back from property during the festival debate was that you had to pull out some far into, into the roadway to see past the food truck to see what traffic is coming down the road. So.
That would be placement of.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, if we could say the, what, 10, 15, 20 foot from the roadway.
So Samantha, I don't, I don't remember that you were here whenever Lori showed, brought this up.
Oh, I was. I thought I was saying, that was last month. And I knew that we all discussed this ad nauseam and it was tabled. That's why I was shocked to get the email and see that there's an ordinance out, like, wait a minute. Yeah. Because the private property thing is the private property owner. That person needs to be dealt with separately. But a lot of this is they, I mean, the state's been, I think it was this session, they passed a new law regarding food trucks because so many municipalities are dealing with food trucks up. The state's the ultimate entity that oversees a lot of this stuff, so I'd have to look with the statute and or change. But when something's on private property, I don't know how you're going to enforce something that's not a violation of, of law. If there, there's not violation of the noise ordinance, because it's not after 11 o'clock at night, right? Lots of noise. If there's an issue with like traffic on someone's property, I would go talk to the private property owner and say, this is distracting to Ms. Youngblood.
The neighbors.
Well, to her point, describing nuisance, every single one of you has had a different definition for what a nuisance is, so it's.
Well, I think that Lori's thing was like, if you were a brick and mortar restaurant, that we have a lot of things that they have to do. And just because they can will it in and will it out, but they're not willing it out, it's like they've opened a restaurant and they haven't applied for permits or anything like that. So I'm, I'm asking you legally, you're saying there's, they're not doing anything wrong?
No, no, I'm not saying they're not doing anything. I'm just saying when it comes to certain ticky tacky things, they're not. I would talk to the private property owner and say they're doing business on your property and what it's zoned as, I mean, how's that property zoned? If it's residential, can't be doing that stuff there.
It's not though, probably business, commercial.
Commercial.
Because it used to be a gas station.
I mean, you could.
Why is it always a gas station?
Do what?
Why is that a gas station?
Sure.
Let me think about that.
Well, and, I mean, not nitpick, but 7:00 a.m. What if I want to set up a coffee truck in my retirement and I want to open at 6:00 to get people on their way to work? I can't open my coffee food truck up at 6:00 o'clock in the morning? I'm just, you know, I think some of these things we need to look at a little closer and make sure whatever we set up as a, you know, ordinance, if we so do so, if we do so, is really what we want it to say and.
I just got to apply to everybody.
Yeah.
It's going to follow this factor.
Yes. And if a food truck is not mobile any longer, then it ain't a food truck.
What?
Right? I mean, it's more of a dispenser, of a, not dispensary, but like a.
Disruptor.
Yep. Like so, I mean, just because it's mobile.
And that's what Lori is saying, you know, like if they're not taking it away, she has.
But that comes down to a conversation with private property owner, like, okay, what is your deal with this? Like, what's your degree? Because, you know, this is an issue for lots of people. Here's why. Because you're essentially running, allowing your tenant to run a restaurant on this property under the guise of it's a food truck. Well, it never moves, right? Do they live there too? Like what, what is going on? And how are they flushing things, you know, water wise, drainage, all of that stuff for purposes of board of health?
Have you had any conversations at all with Nancy about that?
I have not. I know that we asked her to pull it back from the intersection a little bit, and I think they did temporarily.
But they didn't take the big sign off the corner.
That sign is for me and me.
Really?
Yes. It has all of their specifics on this project on it.
Contractors.
Yes.
All the permits and all that.
So you need to sign from them, don't you?
It's one of those mobile signs for the project that was being done around town.
It's not.
We ever seen contractors that have to have all that good stuff, you know?
Depends on where you're in, how big it can be and all that stuff. A lot of places have abolished the weird windy ones.
And, and the labor laws.
But it still can't impede a right of way, right?
It's impeding.
Oh, well, that's an issue.
Can't impede a right of way. That's what we need to talk to Nancy about. Because it has to block our right of way.
I mean, without a permit, I mean, you can't block a public right of way. If that's a public right of way, that's what you're paying for. Whether it's a street, a sidewalk, an alley, you can't block a public right of way without a permit.
It's not blocking a public right of way, is it?
It depends on how far a right of way is, just like this one, you know, this one was 60 feet. I'm just saying, you, way this right up on the corner, it's got to be someone on the right of way. It's not completely, no, it's not, we don't have right of way all the way over.
Is the private property owner honestly to be liable for damage in Supreme Court district arguments on a case regarding a huge old bush on private property where there was a sign that needed to be seen by people driving while someone got T-boned and seriously injured, right? But the private property owner is like, no, that's the city's, you know, issue. And they're saying, no, it's your bush on your property. So now they're going to decide that issue. But the same thing, the private property owner can be liable, but people start wrecking, there's injury without a doubt. If you have stuff that is, you know.
And Mary Ann, when people come in to complain, I think you have, you know, given this a ton of thought and energy and you can say it is lack in progress, right? We are actively trying to figure it out that's fair for everyone, so. But I would definitely talk to Nancy first. All right, moving on. That is discussed. Move on to the flower pots around town. So this is my thing I wanted to talk about. The flower pots that are around town that are planted with flowers have been being done for 15 years. I found out recently because I've known about it for several, but I didn't realize it's been quite that long. Laura Piper Ran, Ron, has been doing that. Green Dell has been giving her discounts to buy the flowers. She was buying the flowers from the FFA when they were doing more of the pottying type flowers. But I would like to discuss possibly giving her some money towards this project because it's something that I wanted to. She's, I think she says she has like 15 pots around now. And I asked her, you know, basically what would be a, consider a, a good help to her. And she said, if she could get $500, it would be great. And I said, I think that is reasonable, you know, that you're doing it in the town limits, something we could certainly pitch in on. So. I don't know if I'm allowed to make a motion, but I would like for you guys to consider making a motion for supporting Laura in her efforts financially.
Do we need to designate where that money's going to come from, from which fund? Do we have a, can it come from the?
Two funds we discussed.
Parks or does it where?
I would, I would take it out of parks.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we should mess with the parks budget without talking to parks. And we have this 13, $17,000 that we have to spend by the end of the year. But we can budget it for next year.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we take $500 out of the fund, out of the ARC fund and apply to the town beautification in care of Laura Piper for planting and maintenance of those containers.
Do you have a second?
One second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then the last piece of business. We have been trying to email all the documents. We don't try to, we get them emailed every month. And I feel like myself, a lot of times, I'm, like at the planning commission meeting recently, usually they bring the things printed out so that they're there to go over. And I found myself thinking, well, it was in my email, if I would have had my computer, I could have brought that, you know, I could have seen that, you know, our, our claims and reg had Ricky print those out for us. And we do not want to print out five copies of that every, for everyone to review in case something comes up in the meeting. So I am recommending purchasing some Chromebooks that we can just have all of the stuff that we get emailed ahead of time. And nobody has to remember to bring a charged working iPad laptop of their own or carry their own device around and possibly drop it. So, you know, I'm thinking for even $300 for the five of us, you know, in a planning commission meeting, there's going to be seven, but all the other boards would be okay with five. So I would ideally think seven would be the best thing. That way if one goes down, we have a backup for the town council meetings. But Mary Ann would keep them in a secure location. They'd have absolutely no information on them. They would be purely to access our personal county mails during meetings so that we can access all the documents. Once again, I don't go to other towns, but I feel like I see that they all have computers. So I would like to say I'd like to take a couple thousand dollars, even if we don't do it now, which I didn't know we were going to have some money that we had to spend until today, and budget it or see what everybody thought about that. Or do you guys all want to bring your own in?
I'm good either way.
Yeah, I think it, it would be a good idea. Not everybody has a, maybe has laptop or notebook.
Sometimes laptops aren't working.
Or a tablet.
Or it's at the office or, you know.
So I think it's a good idea. And, I mean, these packets are thick and they accumulate and they're, you know, there's a cost to print them out, there's a labor cost to print them out. And like I said, they accumulate in our spaces as well. So I think it's a good idea. And I think it's a good idea for us just to get some and have Mary Ann take care of and have for anybody who's on a board at a meeting, or at least the designated, you know, plan commission and, and town council.
All right. So do we have, do we have a motion for that then?
We have a motion that we require seven laptops. Or we could even maybe hook up tablets, but still, you know. But the laptops will be fine.
And you guys can handle that, but I would just like to, like, set a dollar amount on it so that we don't exceed it.
Can we have Mary Ann get a quote on what seven Chromebooks would be? And then, and then come back and.
Well, I did do a little bit of research on that and you can get them anywhere from $2 to $500. And honestly, I feel like the average was $3 to $3.50 for a good Asus Chromebook. So I think if we even said, you know, not to exceed 3,000, I think we'll actually get it for about $2.25.
Okay. Do you want to add that to your motion, Lori, not to exceed 3,000?
Not to exceed 3,000.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. You guys quite a little listened this week, Mary Ann. All right. The moment we've all been waiting for. Consider an amendment to the Eagle Point P U D. Which is why I have my laptop.
Hi, members of town council, my name is Adam Mears and I'm president of the council. With me also is Mark Raddus and Brian Raddus. Brian's handing out a couple of things to you. Essentially, you're going to get two layouts. One of them is the current layout that's approved by that 2021 P U D. And the other one is our proposed revised layout and all. Kind of go through how we got here. Yeah, appreciate your time and the ability to be here today. The Eagle Point PUD was approved back in 2021, July 6th, 2021. And that is what currently as a property on 39 is zone, is zone, planning development called Eagle Point, with everything that was approved through this council back in 2021. As you guys know, the comp plan that was done in 2021, that's a base of 39 and this piece of property, commercial upfront and residential in the rear part of the property. And that is what our plan, both in 2021 and what we're here to talk about today, takes into account and follows that comp plan. When we developed, well, we didn't develop this plan, as you guys know, Brian Holmes originally came through, they handled this only themselves. They had another developer. We eventually stepped in for the other developer and assumed the P V that they had approved. For those of you, I'm sure everybody is aware of this site. It's got some real significant topography issues. And we got involved, we weren't in love necessarily with the layout. Ryan Holmes was ready to go. We did some pricing again with the earthwork and, and the product to the site came back incredibly expensive to develop. So we kind of started working about two years ago, both with staff and several other builders to kind of talk through what would be a reasonable revision to our current approved plan that would make it more efficient, be able to add some benefits to the town and create a scenario that's kind of a win-win for everybody. I know from, from Tammy's experience that, that she, and she said it to me before, I respect her honesty, wasn't a fan of the original plan, but it is. So we're here with this plan as it sits today. We're, we're committed to being here in the Rockview. We want to do this development. However, over the last two years of talking, talking to other builders. However, over the last two years of talking, talking to other builders, because Ryan Holmes is no longer interested in the site, talking to other builders, talking with staff and working with both staff and then plan commission, as you guys know from the last couple of months, to come up with this new plan that again, we think is a, is a big win for, for everybody. New builders, Arbor Homes, they've agreed to be here. If you, if you don't know, generally, every builder has different specs. It's not as if you can generally develop, you can conceptually develop a site for a group of builders. But when you get down to the brass tacks, every builder has different products, both widths, depths, different needs from, if they offer three car garages, things of that nature, and, and more importantly, product differences. For example, Arbor Homes doesn't offer a cottage villa style product. So in order to be able to meet the needs of a new builder, that generally requires them to come back and asking for some changes in order to meet their needs. The development plan, if you look, I want to go through some of the differences between these two plans. Again, this is the current plan as it sits today, that's approved, that we could go build today, and this revised plan. We believe there are significant benefits to the town related to these changes. Some of them came from plan commission and working with plan commission. And as you know, last month, we were given a favorable recommendation from the plan commission for approval of this plan. I think because it adds value. It's clear that generally, there was a gut feeling that not everybody loved the original plan. Again, that's where we are. So if this amendment isn't approved today, if the council decides to not accept the plan commission recommendation and go in a different direction, this doesn't revert back to agriculture. This just keeps the plan that, that we have today, that eventually we're going to have to, to build at some point because we're heavily invested into this property. But again, we wanted to come up with a plan that not, that not only, I think, benefits and helps Arbor to have a great project, but also benefit the town from changes. We're not looking for this to be a one-sided thing. Again, working with plan commission helped get here. The first thing we did that again, came from both staff in the last several years, bonded a connection from 39 to Union Church. This new plan incorporates that connection. We increased the net usable area of the commercial site. Certain, the commercial area is the same, but we're not having a pond up on the south side. So it gives us more commercial area to use there. We increased the open space with this new plan by about three acres. Down here on the south side, the plan that's currently approved doesn't have a buffer there at all. We've added some buffer on the south side, again, to try to create more buffer around, around the property. This plan comes in at about 1,000 square feet of less street, or sorry, litter feet. Litter feet of less street, there's going to be less storm pipe with this layout and less sanitary pipe with this layout. What that means for the town is less maintenance expense down the road. If there's less road, that's less paving or necessary improvements need to be done over time. Same with all the sanitary pipe and the water pipe. Again, lower maintenance cost for the town. This new plan saves more trees. Again, the idea was to try to stay out of some of these areas where there was such significant topography problems, and this will save additional trees. Arbor's product has significant upgrade to Ryan Holmes' product from, on several layers. Mark's going to kind of show you on the iPad some of the differences. But Ryan Holmes' product has 20 elevations total. So a customer that comes to buy Ryan Holmes, this is the streetscape. They can select from 1 to 20 elevation, that's all they have. Arbor has nearly seven times more elevations, about 135. We started with 100 and, I think, 160. We've already carved it down to 25 that we don't like, that we would never accept. Most of these have some level of brick or masonry incorporated into the product. Ryan Holmes' product has zero streetscape. Again, we believe this is a significant upgrade on both elevations. And the important thing about elevations is we don't want a neighborhood that has the same house next door, next door, next door. When Arbor, or when Ryan Holmes, which was approved before, they have 20 choices. You very well may get similar looking homes next door. With 130 some choices from Arbor, that's not going to happen. You're going to have a significant variety of homes. And we think that's an incredible value for this. And then to the, okay. And then it, it also, this new plan keeps the 55, 55 and 60 foot wide lots almost the same as where they are now. Again, I think now we've got 129 of the 55s, but again, the other plan had 98. So yes, there's an increase in the 55s. The product, Arbor's product is all 40 foot wide. So depending on if it's a 55 watt lot, wide lot or a 60 watt lot, the side setbacks will be seven and a half in an aggregate of 15. And on the 60 foot lots, it'll be a minimum of 10 and 20 because again, it's a 40 foot wide product.
So what's that separation between houses then? 15 feet, 20 feet?
Yes, 15, well, 15 or 20. And we've, at a minimum, it depends of course what homes they're, but again, they're all 40 feet wide.
Right.
If you have a 40 foot home, if you have two 60 foot wides next to each other.
So if you have a 40 foot wide home on a 60 foot wide lot, would we not have?
Twenty, yeah, between the two.
Twenty, correct. A lot less than 70.
Unless it's a 60 versus.
A 55, then you got 17 and a half.
Right.
What is it on the old PUD?
The old PUD, it had both. It had both. And so we're essentially the same there. So all in all, I think what we're really asking for is an approval of a modification of the PUD that allows for this added connection through, where now the current two sub areas, that's because Ryan Holmes has two, two different products. Arbor just has one product. They do have single story and two story, but it's not two separate products. We just be down to one sub area of both singles, single and two story homes. Again, the mix of the 55 and 60 foot wide lots. We talked about the front yard setbacks, we will talk about the front yard setbacks. I think a little more than half of them, we have it 40 feet. Some, we, we worked through this with plan commission for some time, reducing some of them. Yes, 63% of them are 40 foot front setbacks. The remainder of 30, most of this is topography related. Again, stay out of having to get retaining walls behind some of these houses because there's such a topography issue that keeping it in 30 will still be able to accomplish cars in the driveways and everything that I don't want. We think, again, we want to make sure you understand that's the minimum. So if there's a house that maybe isn't so deep, we can move it back. We're not, and we're happy to commit however we need to commit it, that if it's not that deep, if there's a depth of a house that allows it to go to 40 in an area where it's 30, we're okay to do that.
Yeah, let me help explain, who obviously understands this. But if we have our hill sites, as we kind of talked with several of you, but also the bank commission, if we have this hill site behind us coming at us and the home is down here, and this hill site's coming at us, we've got to be able to maintain, the homeowner wants to be able to maintain that, that space, right? There's a couple of spots that I've noticed in Homestead where it's just like super vertical. I'm like, you're going to have to have golf shoes or baseball boots on and kind of leave here to take care of it. And that's just not feasible and not usable. We're trying to create a space that they can use. And so we need to keep that slope at three to one. And so if the house sits, and we had a diagram before that we didn't bring tonight, but if we have a house that's 40 feet deep and we've got 30 feet of rear yard to be able to then have a slope go up from there, then that's, that's tolerable, right? We give them some usable space and put it at three to one and all that. But if we have a house and that's with a 30 foot setback for whatever it may be at 30, if we shove them back to 40, then all of a sudden that rear yard tightens. Or in order to keep that space, we've got to do it at two to one slope instead of a three to one slope, and they can't put a mower on. And so those are the things we're trying to alleviate with this plan. But it also has some, some positives that come out of that, right? And, and there's our south property line there in the main chunk. We end up with a buffer because we have that toe bone that we want to dodge. It ends up being a buffer to the ground to the south. And there's other good things that happen out of that. And, and we do it in other neighborhoods that haven't started to lose it. There's a spot, there's a neighborhood that we do it where there's product that's at a general 30, but we alternate between 28, 30 and 32 on those setbacks. We give it some break in the, in the streetscape as we're looking down the road. Those, those houses go in and out. You know, you go into some homes that have long strays and it does get a little bearishly, right? So if we're stagger, if we have the ability to stagger those homes in those spaces, then that helps us do it. And we can go to 30, 32, 34 if we have that ability, right? So that, if the homeowner picks a house that's 50 feet deep or 60 feet deep versus the one that's 40, then we have certainly, you know, we have to worry about some of those. So the deeper homes stay at the, at the 30, but the shorter homes go to 32 or 34. That helps us with that streetscape as well.
So we just talked about the setbacks. Currently, I think more than half the neighborhoods allow to be vinyl. Again, we'd ask that all of it be able to be considered vinyl, but we committed at plan commission to a minimum thickness of .46. I think you can go, we found out at plan commission, you can go as low as like .3, it was like 32, like it was incredibly thin vinyl. If you go much more than .46, you really reduce your color options. .46 is higher than what a lot of the builders do nationally, but it allows for a much larger color palette.
What's this, what's the state standard on that?
Well, the standard was like .32.
So it's better than the state standard?
Oh, yeah, yes. We committed at plan commission to having a minimum of 50% of the homes have a masonry rain scope. Again, if you look at, if you guys took the time to look at the link, hopefully you got the link of the Arbor product. We basically got rid of almost all of the product that didn't have some masonry on it. And again, most of their product has masonry anyway, but committed to that plan commission, that was one of the points everybody wanted to hear is that at least 50%. And then having the Arbor product be approved, the garage being a minimum of 4 square feet rather than dimensions, and then Arbor product be approved as part of this text amendment. I understand if there's apprehension to change, to, you know, to, to not like the original plan. I guess I would implore you to think about where we are. We're, we've got a plan that here I know don't like. That ship is sailed, that's approved. You could build that today. We've spent the last two years trying to come up with a plan that is better and that benefits the town. I gave you all, again, at the Boulevard, increase the commercial area, the net area, increase the open space, additional buffer, less street storm and sanitary, which means less maintenance, more trees and better architecture. So I guess I want you to think about that when you're considering your vote because a, a vote against the amendment doesn't change the fact that you can still go build what's approved today. We think this is a better plan. Plan commission thought it was a better plan. It benefits the town better than what the current plan does. So I ask that you consider that, recognize that this is a better plan than what's currently approved. And it'll benefit the town with all the things that I've laid out to you. We'd ask that you, again, vote to accept plan commission's recommendation and approve this, like, plan amendment. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have. No driveways off this main road.
No driveways off the main road. And that's a change from what?
Yep, and we have some kicking at it to make it not be, you know, a speed room. So yeah, no houses on that main road.
How wide the streets going, how wide are the streets?
Don't need your, I don't know what the standard is off the top of my head, but they'll, they'll have to meet your standards for, I mean, clearly we'll meet all the town's standards related to construction.
That's in, that's in a site plan review.
Yeah, when we, if, if this is successful, we'll, we go to TAC home construction plans and they, during TAC, they would assure that we're meeting all the city standards and Lou would have plenty to say about that as well.
Homestead, when they park on both sides, it becomes very narrow.
Yeah.
The school buses do have problems somewhat getting through there. Especially if they have to meet in car.
The biggest issue with that, Lauren, is these are public streets. So without, it's difficult for us with, with public streets to try to limit where somebody would park. If there was an ordinance that only required parking, or if our ordinance only had parking on one side, that's different. But we, we have difficulty unilaterally, you know, this happens all the time in a public, somebody will call me, because I kind of help run our HOAs, somebody will call me, oh, this guy's parking. It's a public street, I would tell you. You can call police if it's, if it's a car that's been sitting there or it's on blocks or something. The police can come tag it, right? But we don't have as private, the ability to enforce public road enforcement.
Yeah.
But we're happy to consider doing what we can, even if we put it in our covenants, it's really not enforceable. But we generally do put things like that in our covenants. We're happy to commit to put, put that in the covenants.
We have a main thoroughway, nobody.
No parking on the main thoroughway. Yeah, yeah, no, there's no parking and no driveways or anything. That is a no parking, it's just literally a free street.
I have a question, and it's kind of concerning Homestead. A lot of people are concerned about all of the rentals in the Homestead. Would it be possible to put in the covenants restricting so, over so much percent rentals?
Yeah, I mean, Mary Ann, one of the things that we generally do, I'll, I'll tell you, this is our practice at all of our events, we do not allow short-term rentals. That's number one. These, no BRBOs, no fly-by-the-night people popping in and out. We don't love restricting rentals primarily because people have things that happen that my job got transferred, I got to move. Uh-oh, there's 40 people already rented, now I'm going to pay my mortgage and I got to move. We're sensitive to that. We're also sensitive to people's private property rights as to do what they want with, with their property. I think if we, we've done it before, if that's something that the council wanted to see, we could commit to some level of restrictions. I just want, I want to make sure everybody understands the implication of that. If you may have a resident that gets transferred and they can't rent their house now because there's this.
Okay, we could say, you know, if we put a limit on it, that no rental companies that own properties within the.
We can do that.
Because I think that's the major problem is that rental companies, they're buying on your tight block.
And what we say is that, what, what we'll say is owners have to be individuals, not covenants.
But how does the HOA have the authority legally to regulate that?
We've, we've had that discussion many times.
You don't, the answer is you don't.
There's a lot of stuff in covenants that are unenforceable.
For sure.
Now, what we can do is enforce a limit on leasing, which we do again. We have a minimum of a year. So again, we're not looking for people that are short-term. Somebody that's there for a year, they have to get approved by the HOA from, and sign off if they're going to follow the covenants. Everything we can to make sure that the renters come in are going to be paid. But yeah, it's very, very difficult to lease.
And we've discussed this, this keeps getting, yes, and we keep saying that we want to discuss it or you guys are interested in discussing it and have more thought about people renting. We know it.
I'll take, Fishers.
And they just pass it on.
Yeah, look at what, look at what Fishers just did and, and we're a part of it because we've got some rental properties, we have to register a couple of our properties.
And Indianapolis does the same thing.
Yeah, and I, I think there are ways that the town can handle that better than what us as developers can handle.
Well, I'm just trying to convey to Mary Ann especially, you have zero, I'm a lawyer and I'm not trying to, but like I'm saying, as an HOA, you have zero authority to tell me what I cannot do with my property.
I totally agree.
Zero.
Well.
And if you try to do that, I mean, they, you can restrict some things you do. You can't restrict my usage as long as I'm not breaking any other laws, like local, state, whatever.
Clearly, we, we have full enforcement of architectural guidelines and things that, with somebody, what they can do with their property inside and out. But, but I, I agree with you, that's a, it's one of those things where people.
It's something that the council needs to consider.
People put in contracts all the time, things that aren't enforceable, they look good. But yeah, it's kind of similar to that.
So one other thing to add, we have a full-time guy.
So one other thing to add, we have a full time guy that we have on staff that helps monitor our subdivision. So first off, we hire a professional management company. So they're there, the duration that we're there. And at some point in time, we will sell all that homes in that site if we want to turn it over to the homeowners. Hopefully, you know, we will, if we have to have it be this way, we've got reserves in place. We have a board in place, we hand it over to them, well done. Bringing that time right before that happens, our C A D, Community Steps Director Matt Bellar, will be monitoring the site. He's driving through at least once a week. He's the site's management company. We're doing it on our own, looking for cars that are parked there too long. We're looking for fences or soccer goals placed out in the front yard or those type of things. Grass being maintained, et cetera, et cetera. And we're trying to get, stay in there and make sure we're staying in front of that. Because we need to sell lots, right? So it's very important for us to keep the community up to a different standard than any of some of the other guys do. So we work really hard on that side as well as our entry raise, all the other studies to go with the programming. So just wanted to know that.
Can you, who can answer on D of the amendment? It says front yard setbacks will be primarily 40 feet with some reduced. Define some reduced to 30?
I think we said it was 60, well, it's laid out on the plan. It's 63% 40s, 37% 30s.
And it's noted on this plan.
I was going to ask if Eddie, you were in on the work session that I wasn't in on Eddie. Do you, can you kind of share like what? Because I feel like the Plan, the Plan Commission vote was very close. It was 43, wasn't like unanimous or anything. You were honestly a vote that surprised me. So I was going, did you kind of just tell us what you like about the plan and why you did vote for it?
I was against. This project, I like the through street for one. The, none of the, none of the homes will face that through street. All right, to access the home, you have to go on the side streets. Their drive will all be off the side streets. So I feel like that will alleviate a traffic issue that we have with Homestead. Because some of the people that live in Homestead can come across the street or the West Junior Meadow to get to the school, to the back way instead of going to the old west, I don't know, stop sign up here.
Um, what about the, did you guys talk about the topography and like where? Because one thing I see in this is I don't see where all the hills are. Like this looks so flat, but I know that it's not. So I don't feel like for me that this is representative, like how do I know where the hills are in all this? Did you guys get any kind of topography map that I wasn't privy to?
Well, through the two years that we've been going through this, we have had those discussions in the past. This was more of a quick picture that we didn't, we didn't go to our typical engineer to draw this. We have a guy in house that was an engineer trained, and he drew this. So there's still, this is still conceptual entry. But the whole idea here is that we looked at all the topo in house and said, here's where we have problems. How can we alleviate some of those problems? We look at it from both, you know, from setbacks and from size lots and moving around some of those areas. Our southern border, as you go into the project up to where the corner in the layout is, is certainly one of the higher problem areas for us. As you go down where the little curve is in the main part of the road, that's a problem area. And so some of those areas, we're able to dodge and move around to stay out of. Having a 30 foot setback and that buffer gives us that ability to have another 50 feet. So it's, it's a, it gives us an extra 30, 20 feet to work with. We've already amended this project once a couple of years ago because of curb radiuses. Fire departments couldn't get through. So hopefully that will be addressed.
So that brings me to my next question. It seems like there was a lot of advising meetings to come up with the original PUD. Like, I feel like we ought to be having the fire department and the school and all them weighing in on any amendments we make also. Is that, was that discussed in the meeting? And I apologize that I was on vacation during the meeting.
No, that wasn't discussed in the meeting. But we have discussed that we're going to have to have watch my previous incident because more of the emergency vehicles didn't through. And we're going to paint the curbs red, yellow, no parking in the curves.
If we have no parking on the street and we have two more tighter radiuses, you know, once it gets to a certain extent, we said we would keep, put no parking signs and put a yellow radius and yellow on the curve. And then obviously it would be no parking on that side of the street.
I think I was also saying, we wouldn't, this is improvements. And we get to a next level of plans at that TAC meeting. Buyers there, everybody's there commenting on the plans that are more detailed. It'd be difficult for, I think, anybody to comment about this just because it's, it's not engineered to a level where the fire department say, hey, we need to tweak here, we need to tweak there. There's plenty of bites of that apple at TAC. Plans go out, and Lou can talk about this, plans go out to everybody, everybody sends their comment letters. He, you guys have a meeting where everybody's at one... That's what I'm familiar with. We don't like, everybody's on a real big table, everyone's going, fire says, I don't like this, I don't like this, make this change. At this level of detail, it's difficult, I think, to get that level of feedback. But as we go further down the road, I think they'll have every opportunity to have their input and require certain changes or modifications that they need for this plan. And of course, we have, we have to follow what the town talks off. So I think more conceptually, it's, we think this is a better plan that was approved. And we're just trying to make a better project for the town and then a significant step up from what's currently approved.
Has something changed with the water and the fire hydrant access? Anything changed with that recently that I'm aware of, not aware of? No? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well, I'd like to, who did this be approved over what was already there since what was already there is really on set. I think they've, they've done a good job as far as, and in good faith presented us with something that is viable and something that will enhance the town rather than take away from it. I think the PAC Commission did a good job in analyzing, looking at this. And in fact, the first time they approached this, what did I say? I said, this stinks.
Yeah.
And since then, I think this certainly would do a lot better for us than what was already...
I definitely agree that it's an improvement. I do see that it's an improvement, but I still feel like there's a lot left to be desired. I feel like the 30 foot setbacks being nearly 40% is still, we're still gonna have a lot of the same problems. And I am new to the whole process, but it, I don't see how we can go on a conceptual, non-engineered plan. So if somebody wants to answer that question for me, that would be great.
I would just say, this is a conceptual, non-engineered plan that was approved. Nobody can spend $100,000 to get engineered plans if we don't know we can move forward with this. That's the purpose of it called a development plan. It's a 30,000 foot look at it. And every next step we take drills deeper down, deeper down, deeper down.
Yeah, just to be clear, you're not voting on a plan. It's only amending the verbiage that allows them then to create a plan that will then have to be approved through, well, it should be approved with everybody's input.
I'm thinking though, this, we are asking for this to be approved as part of the original PUD. Had a conceptual plan like this, and had this. So we're asking that this plan and these amendments, because the amendments take this. So we're asking for both of you approved, just as the original plan commitments and this development plan were approved.
Yeah, and that's correct. Yeah, I know you guys didn't do that, but that's the original thing.
That's the way we always, I'll be honest with you, every PUD we've ever done, we've done hundreds. They all have a conceptual plan as part of it. And then that is the framework by which you then go deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper. I would say this is kind of 30,000 feet. You're gonna end up seeing something that's at 100 feet, and everybody gets a bite of that apple. So...
And there are times that we'll lose a lot, particularly 10, as we go through the design process, right?
Like what you see there is not the final plan. Like I, I'm not a fan of the first one, obviously, because we've discussed that through many meetings. But that's just what they're going by now. What if it turns out to look like that, we don't know.
No, I mean, that's what we're asking, that would be our guideline as we go through the...
Conceptual plan.
Right.
So that's, that's what we'd like to have. And whether it's, it's got a 40, 50, or 60 foot radius, that should be your guys' concern. That should be the hack concern, of ensuring it works for fire safety, you know, for school buses or whatever. Those are, that's the hack we do as, on your guys' behalf. You know, we have lots of guidelines that we need to work with as well, which we've already, we've already, we've already, the first section didn't fully approve.
And if we vote, Samantha, this is a friend of mine, if we vote against the plan as it is presented tonight, does that prevent them from, like, can they go back and work on it some more, bring it back? Or is it dead?
I mean, you could always present a new plan.
Okay.
It's just a matter, they could also revert back to the original PUD and what it says, right? Now, there are some other sticking points in the original PUD too, that they'd have to, you know, that were, that are sticking point, that may have to be done. But yeah, I mean, they've always changed their plan, which is a matter of how many times they're gonna change their plan and put hours into this before they say, okay, we're done.
I feel like one of the points that Lori showed, there were three of us that voted against it on the mission. And Lori's concern was that she felt if it wasn't in the PUD that they had to have some type of rain scotting or brick face. If it wasn't in there, then the builder's gonna charge five, eight, $10,000, $15,000 to add a brick front. And then how many people are gonna choose that option? And so that's how you guys came up with the 50%. And I guess...